I'd like to call a meeting of the Housing Subcommittee to order with the Clerk. Please call the roll.
Chairman Leonozzo.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
To present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Tonight, we're here to review a vote that was referred to the Subcommittee by the full Council back a couple of weeks ago to discuss accepting the Community Preservation Act. With us this evening, we have Counselor Noon as well as Counselor Conway, and we have the Director of Development Services, Eric Slagel, here this evening. I would like to say for the record, this actually, this discussion started back in early March when initially Counselor Noon had filed a motion to have the City Council look into whether or not we wanted to move forward with adopting the Community Preservation Act. And then Counselor Kennedy actually followed up with the second motion. And we did get the report two weeks ago, probably three weeks ago now, from the administration, which actually outlines what needs to be done in order to move forward and the benefits, if you will, of adopting the Community Preservation Act. So it's okay with my colleague Counselor Mercier, maybe what we can do is have Eric Slagel just kind of walk us through the process because this, tonight, is the first of what would be kind of a long process, actually getting it on the ballot at the November election if the Council chooses to move forward. I would also like to say that in some of my limited research, it turns out that Lowell is the only community right now in the greater Lowell area that has not adopted the Community Preservation Act. And if you recall, Counselor Mercier and I were talking about it earlier when Registered Deeds, Dick Howe Jr., was here, saying that monies that have been paid as a result of the act being passed to the Registered Deeds has not benefited the community, has not benefited the city of Lowell because we have not moved forward with the Preservation Act. Again, there's pros and cons, and that's why we're here to begin the discussion, so.
And, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And recently, there was an article in the paper about Drakett, how they applied to common grounds for housing. I think it's a senior housing.
Sixty minutes.
And they did take part of the community preservation money, and they did get like $3 million, was it?
Correct. They were getting $3 million for $19 million development projects. So a good shot in the arm for them.
So their dividends paid off to some degree, paying on the taxes, but getting that money back in development, so maybe we could do the same thing, but I'll leave that to you. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott, we just opened up and just talked a little bit about how we got to the Subcommittee. The vote was referred to the Subcommittee for review and consideration.
Thank you.
And Eric was just about to give us an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. As was noted in the motion response, adopting the Community Preservation Act is a process that requires several different steps. The first and most important thing to know about the Community Preservation Act, which I think has been alluded to by the Counselors, is that the funding for projects that are funded under the Community Preservation Act comes from two buckets. The first bucket is a surcharge on local property taxes at a percentage rate that is set by the municipality. So you can either set it at 1%, 2%, or 3% of the tax levy. The second bucket comes from the Community Preservation Trust Fund, which is funded via a surcharge on real estate transactions at the Registry of Deeds. Lowell has not adopted the Community Preservation Act, so there has not been a surcharge on the taxes, the property taxes of Lowell residents. However, Lowell residents have been paying the surcharge at the Registry of Deeds ever since the Community Preservation Act was originally adopted. The numbers, and I would defer to Dick Howe, he was the one who kind of put together the numbers, but since 2001.
If I could interrupt Counselor Elliott.
Oh, I apologize.
That's fine. I just want to be clear, I just want to sort of clarify that statement. Lowell residents that have real estate transactions at the Registry of Deeds are paying that surcharge.
Correct.
It's not a blanket charge.
Correct. And every resident in the Commonwealth who does a real estate transaction, including Lowell residents who do real estate transactions, pay that surcharge when they do there.
And when Mr. Howe was here back in March, I'm just looking at a newspaper article after that meeting, indicated that Lowell property owners who have gone, as Counselor Elliott said, and had a transaction have paid $6 million into the fund since it was.
Yes, since 2001. So that's a significant amount of money.
Yep.
That Lowell, that have been paid by Lowell residents who've been doing real estate transactions. To give the Subcommittee an idea of what that number, those numbers actually mean, the percentage numbers, the, I met with Connor Baldwin, the CFO, and he indicated that 1% of the tax levy is approximately $1.33 million. So 2 is obviously 2.68 or so, and 3 is right around $4 million. So that would be, if the Council chose to set the rate, that would indicate those, what those different percentages would mean for the city's portion of.
Turns out, it would be about $35 per taxpayer per year, based upon that 1.3 million at the 1%.
Right.
About $35. So if you did a 2%, 3%, you could just, you know, do the math, it'd be $70 or $110 per year, based upon, again, this information that we received back in March.
So the, as we spoke about before during the original presentation of this motion response to the Council, the adoption of the CPA requires a majority vote of the City Council, which would refer that to a ballot question, at which time it could be approved by a simple majority of the members of the community.
Would require a public hearing at the City Council level?
I believe so. I believe it would require a public hearing for the vote. But I would defer to the Clerk about this specifically. So it's also possible, and we noted this in the motion response, to include, to offer four different types of exemptions to property owners from that surcharge. You could apply, allow property owners to apply for, to apply for an exemption if they were qualified for low-income housing or low-to-moderate-income senior housing. So those would be allowed to apply for an exemption. You can apply an exemption of the first $100,000 of taxable value of the real estate. So this would be automatically, you wouldn't have to apply for that one, it would be automatically applied by the Assessor's Office when they prepared the tax rate. You can apply an exemption to the first $100,000 of taxable value of Class III and Class IV commercial and industrial properties. Again, that would be done by the Assessor's Office. And you can allow an exemption to be applied for by certain types of commercial and industrial property owners. And those are, so to give you kind of an idea of how that would work, one of the, so Boston actually has adopted CPA. They have a lot of information that they've published regarding their, both the programs which they're using the funds for and how they do their calculations about exemptions and the like. So just to give some examples, this is from an article published by the mayor of Boston by his office in February of this year. These are some of the projects that they funded with CPA funds. $5 million to combat displacement through the purchase of existing rental units to, and put income restrictions on them, to make them permanently affordable housing. So they bought the units at the market rate and then put income restrictions on them to allow affordable housing in those units. They set aside $3.8 million to fund first-time homebuyer program. They did park renovations. They granted, they planted some trees on the esplanade. In Brighton, they spent $1 million to build 12 deed-restricted condominiums. So they deed-restricted those condominiums for affordable housing.
The vote actually indicates, as you know, Mr. Slagel, 10% can be used for open space preservation, 10% for historic preservation, 10% for community housing, and up to 5% for administrative expenses. So it can be used for a variety of projects and to support staff who's implementing projects under the Preservation Act.
Yes.
And it also should be noted that, should we go down this road, we would have to set up a community preservation committee that could be up to nine members that would be reviewing each application for funding going forward and then make a recommendation.
They make the final determinations of which projects to recommend. So to give an example, in Boston, this is how they set it up. So a $500,000 commercial property that they gave a $100,000 exemption to would, at the 1% rate, that property paid an extra $100 a year. There was no, they didn't have the personal exemption for their commercial properties in Boston. And the personal exemption, in Boston, for instance, a residential property with a residential exemption paid $14.97, a $500,000 residential property with a residential exemption. And a $500,000 property with a residential exemption and a personal exemption paid $7.47 in FY19. So the amounts are relatively small with those exemptions built in.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if you, if the city of Lowell decides on, let's say, a 1%, a 2%, a 3%, do we get according to a project by what we put into it? For example, let's say that we wanted to fund some affordable housing, or maybe the 10% of what we have went to open space. Do we get back what we put into it? In other words, we can't get more because we only were at 1%? Is that how that works?
So the way that it works is the surcharge from the municipality is funds that we get to use, and then that is added to by, you know, a percentage of matching funds from the trust fund.
Oh.
So the rate of matching has varied over the years. As the trust fund has been depleted, the rate of matching has dropped. I, don't quote me on this, but I think someone said it was like 12% or something at this point.
So the, if we go 3% rather than 1, are we getting more money back, more to use for projects because we paid more? Or we're getting less because we put in the 1% instead of 3? Is that?
So for instance, if we set it at 1%.
Sure.
That would be 1.3 million.
Okay.
We would have that 1.3 million for projects that went before the Community Preservation Committee to allocate that 1.3 million in that year. And we would also have an additional amount of money that was matched from the Community Preservation Trust Fund.
And we.
And if it was at 12%, that's like $150,000? So we'd have an extra 100, we'd have 1.48 to spend.
Plus, we would get something from the charges that go into people that do transactions at the registry?
Well, that's the trust fund.
Oh, that's a trust fund.
That money goes into the trust, Community Preservation Trust Fund.
Trust fund.
And then we would get a percentage of that back.
Do we know what percentage, like Drakett is paying? What percentage is it, 1%, 2, or 3?
I don't know what the percentage is of the surrounding communities are.
We don't know that.
I'm certain it's a knowable piece of information.
If I had to guess, based upon, based upon the fact they have so much open space in Drakett and they've been doing a lot of preservation lately, I would say they're probably in the 3%. But I could be wrong. But again, it was a $3 million award to the Common Ground Development Corporation for this most recent 60-unit development project. So that's a fair chunk of money.
Yeah.
You can also carry that money over, over years.
Correct.
So that could be multiple years allocation. We might not spend all 1.33 million in one year. We might spend a million, then we'd have $300,000 to carry over to the next year. So you don't have to spend it all on the.
I think of the 351 cities and towns, close to 260 or so have actually adopted the Preservation Act.
There's a majority.
You know, some cities, I think 45% of cities in the balance are towns or vice versa, but.
I think the majority of municipalities, as the Chairman mentioned, have adopted it. And in the greater Lowell area, if you look at the map, there's a sea of greens for the people who've adopted it, and Lowell is a white one and the middle is not.
That's right. That's right.
Right. Thank you.
Again, some other things that folks have talked about, being able to spend the money on, we have historic preservation, for instance. We have these lovely stained glass windows. They're both in this chamber, in the City Hall Chamber, and in the Development Services Office, which is the mirror of this chamber on the other side of the building. They are in desperate need of restoration, so we could use those funds to do that. But you can also fund, do historic preservation of private structures. So for instance, in Boston, I believe they spent some historic preservation money to stabilize, restore, and weatherproof the first Baptist church people in Back Bay.
Well, the interesting thing about the timing of this, that both Counselor Elliott and Counselor Mercier would remember the Historic Preservation Commission, which was around for a good number of years, but then ended up going out of business by statute. I think it was extended for maybe five years, and then it went out of business by legislation. And the LDFC, which administered their funds, just in the last year, had to pay back the federal government the balance of the funds. So again, if we had access to an additional pool of money, not to say we're not going to have a lot of discussion because it is a burden, with small "b," if you will, on the taxpayer.
Yes.
But at the end of the day, it could help with our continued efforts with historic preservation, affordable housing, open space, and so on.
Right. So I know that there's, the Parks Department has, in the last several years, moved to put splash pads in a lot of the parks for, as a recreation amenity that's much lower maintenance than the pools historically been there. That would be the kind of thing that could be funded with, I know there are towns in Massachusetts that are already currently funding splash pads, dog parks, the various other open space amenities with Community Preservation Act funds. And so there's kind of a wide variety of different projects that would potentially be eligible for these funds if the Council of Taxpayers chose to.
If it's our, my colleagues, I have a question relative to the exemptions. Would the exemptions be approved by the city treasurer, the city manager? Would they have to go through, the request would have to go through the Community Preservation Committee? Or, just thinking about how, again, if I wanted a $100,000 exemption on my real estate, you know, could, who do I ask that exemption?
Right. So there, so the two types of exemptions, the $100,000 exemption, you don't have to apply at all.
Okay.
That is merely, that is applied to every tax bill.
Okay.
If it's a residential exemption, so if the Assessor's Office has it listed as a residential parcel, it would automatically get the $100,000 exemption when they're calculating the taxes prior to the assessment of the Community Preservation Act. I will, I can, I can check, but I believe my understanding is about the other exemptions. It's an application process with the Assessor's Office, just like, you know, abatements.
Okay.
For the, for the tax, for tax purposes.
Okay, thank you.
What are the requirements for that particular exemption? I know there's one.
What are the requirements for, for the $100,000? Is that eligible? Anyone's eligible?
That is an exemption that, if the City Council chooses to adopt, is applied, it's a residential exemption. So all residential property would be, would get that exemption.
So when you say adopt, that would be included in the language that we would adopt before it's placed on the ballot?
That's correct.
All that sorted out beforehand?
Correct. So the City Council would need to choose the type of exemptions that they wanted to put forward for the ballot question and the percentage that they wanted to put forward for the ballot question. That would happen in the initial City Council vote, and that would be the package that would be voted on by the voters on the ballot question.
Counselor Conway.
Just very quickly, the, when you talk about a ballot question, what election are you talking about? This one or next one?
It was my understanding that it would be this one, and the timing would be that we have, we'd have to have whatever language the Council decides to move forward with ready for the election office 90 days prior to the November election. So again, the Subcommittee would, again, I don't know if we're prepared to take action tonight except through a report of progress at the regular meeting, and then at some point, if we decide to go forward as a majority, would be, the vote would be referred to a public hearing. I don't know if the vote, Mr. Slagel, will have to be amended based upon Counselor Elliott's question to make sure that whatever exemptions we decide to put in the vote are in the vote. Because I'm, again, looking at it quickly. Again, it talks about chapter, section and chapter of, of Chapter 44B, but whether or not those are actually, I think they are, but we just would need to make sure that they are.
Yes.
Because we think that we'd want the exemptions to be available.
That would need to be a part of the discussion, and that's my understanding, it would need to be a part of it. So I was just providing some information about some of the surrounding towns. So Drakett has a 2% rate that they've put it on. Bill Ricker has a 1%. Chelmsford has a, I mean, Westford has 3%.
Okay.
So that's just kind of a, it obviously varies around that.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Con, will you finish, Mr. Conway? I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Noon, do you have any questions or comments? Again, as I stated in my opening remarks, this came to us vis-à-vis a motion back in March.
You know, you alluded to earlier, Mr. Chairman, I thank you, but just like you said, you alluded to earlier, and I know that Eric mentioned this too, we heard a testimony from Dick Howe Jr. of the Restored Deed. This is money that a resident who owned home paid to the Restored Deed, and in the past number of years is close to $10 million, somewhat, that the city of Lowell has not benefited from it. The neighbor, city in town, should thank the resident of Lowell for those money. I think, you know, I understand that we, you know, in a tough time in terms of, you know, this is because surcharge, I know, I agree with Counselor Elliott, that is the taxes, you know, to the resident, but one of which that, you know, you get, say, $1.3 million, you get 12% of those 3, $1.3 million to use to do those number of things that you mentioned, such as affordable housing needed, such as the open space, you know, doing recreationals and whatnot outside, as well as historical. And Eric mentioned this building needs some work as well. So, you know, I think this is something that, you know, it's the right time to do it, and maybe before we do it, we need to think about it. As Counselor Elliott mentioned, looking at the language in terms of exemption, exemption, you know, how we incorporate that into maybe exempt, exempt on senior, you know, and citizens, you know, who own home and barely can afford it. So those is one of which we need to think about. We also think about as well is those low-income, you know, so those are some of the things that we need to do, consider. But, you know, after the committee deliberate on it, I think this is something that, you know, that we should try, whether that be 1% or 2% or 3%. Start with low number, and maybe if you see there's progress, a great profit, then, then maybe we could add to it, you know, and, but that said, it's up to the voter when we put it on the ballot to see whether or not they can, you know, agree with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Noon. Counselor Elliott.
Yeah, just briefly, I mean, I, I like the principle behind the Community Preservation Act, and I know that we did discuss it a number of years ago. My concern, as I alluded to earlier, is a surcharge, and perhaps even more so now because it is on top of the property tax bill. There are some attractive features to it, I agree. A lot of the things that we have done in the city that other communities have not been able to do, I think our delegation, and I think our grant writers, I think our planning and development department have, have done great work, certainly Counselor Leonozzo mentioned a little Historic Preservation Commission. I travel around the state and know, in my opinion, the city has done an outstanding job in comparison to other communities with historic preservation. And, and while 1%, it, it might not seem much, and in the big scheme of things, maybe not. But my concern is a time that this would, would affect taxpayers and the burden that would place on top of the existing high school that, you know, long-term borrowing will, will hit 2020. We put this on the ballot, this will hit the same time. So I support putting it on the ballot without question. So, I support putting it on the ballot without question. And there's, there's great opportunity for many things. On the other hand, I think of some of the other priorities where, you know, we have, we'll have another loan order coming in for the SBA applications for all of our school roofs. I mean, that'll be another capital, and so many other capital needs. And what I would perhaps like to see, if we're just going to report as a report of progress, what would this money be for? I think it would be important to have at least a list, maybe some of those capital, capital improvement items on that five-year plan that we have. Maybe this will be eligible for some of those, I don't know. I do know at some point in time, I mean, this is, this is permanent, so I understand that, but the increase just alone for, for the high school on top of our, you know, annual levy increases, it will, will stress the taxpayers without a doubt. So, I think it's important to put on the ballot. I, I would like to see some projects that we would benefit, so when we put this on the ballot, we could say, this is the money that we're going to, going to get, this will be the contribution, this is the projects that we could benefit, whether it's even just saving open space, or as you mentioned, splash pads are, are the, are the new thing, affordable housing. I think the city has been very, well, I think we've been strategic in, in our affordable housing and the projects that we've done, and the developers using tax credits, historic tax credits, so, et cetera. I, I want, I'd like to hear some more. I think it does have some attractive features by far, certainly the funding from, from both the trust fund and, and the state. And I did read today that there's an article, the state, there are groups that are pushing to, for the legislature to restore that fund at the state level, so anytime we can get state money, that, that helps. And to some degree, maybe it's, you know, it's a match. I just want a final question. Once we're in it, we're in it, you, you cannot, I mean, it's, it's an annual surcharge from, from the time that we adopted or the people voted to.
So, that was actually the next point I was going to bring up, which is, so acceptance can be amended, so if you wanted to change the exemptions or change the percentage via a majority vote and a ballot question. And then revocation of acceptance would be by a majority vote and a ballot question. But you have to wait a minimum of five years before you pull forward a revocation. So, you'd be in it for, guaranteed for five years. But after that, the same process that you used to adopt it could be used to revoke the adoption.
If I could, as a follow-up to Counsel Elliot's point about, and I do think it's a good point, and I'd probably entertain a motion to get additional information based on the five-year capital plan, to see what these could be, you know, the funds could be used for. I think that's a good, good idea. My, my question though has to do with, if it gets approved in the November election, would we then be eligible right away for monies from the trust fund? Or do we have to put tax receipts up prior to getting any money from the trust fund?
I'm not sure exactly when that goes in, so that's something we can look up.
You can look up, okay. Thank you. Again, would it make sense, Counsel Elliot, to put that in the form of a motion to get information from the administration based upon the five-year capital plan?
Yeah, I'd like to make, make that motion, that we get more specifics on the, on Chapter, Chapter 44B and what is included, you know, I presume that we're going to adopt a, is it a resolution? Is that what this is, Counsel?
The vote.
So, in, within the vote, there'll be the specific criteria, and would that be included on the ballot?
Yes.
It will be on the ballot, so exemptions, all of the criteria.
The percentage.
That's good.
The exemptions would be included on the ballot, as part of the description on the ballot.
So, some, I guess clarification on, on that particular, as well as potential projects that, whether they're in the capital fund or any other projects that would benefit, that the city would benefit from, from adoption of this act.
And just to, just to kind of reiterate, there, there would be, be a Community Preservation Committee.
Correct.
They would be the entity that would determine whether or not projects are funded. It would be kind of an application process to that committee.
I think there's one or two elected officials on that as well, I think.
I'm not sure, exactly sure how that, how that committee is made up. I do think that there is, are appointments from the administration and, and elected officials on that committee.
Okay.
But they would make the ultimate determination based on the applications that they received of the allocation of funds.
Counsel, you have a motion on the floor. Counsel Conway.
Yeah, I just, if you could include on that report, who would be on that, on that committee?
Committee.
Right, because you just, you named the, potentially, a couple political figures, or who else might be on it?
Is that in the language, Mr.?
So, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what the makeup of the committee.
Because I know SBA is very specific on community members, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Right. So, I mean, if you could include that in that report.
Okay, I actually, I actually, I have.
I figure you might have it, I'd be shocked if it's not in the statute.
Why I brought this packet. So, it must consist.
Thank you, Counsel Conway. Go ahead, Eric.
Must consist of five to nine members. It must include a designee from each of the following boards and commissions: the Conservation Commission, the Historic Board, the Planning Board, the Board of Parks, the Housing Authority. So, those are five required members of the, of the commission, of the, of the Community Preservation Committee. And the specific, you know, the specific makeup of the committee would be created by an ordinance adopted by city council. That wouldn't be on the ballot question, it would be adopted by council. And that would include the composition of the committee, the member selection, whether it's by election or appointment, and the term that the members would serve. So, that would, the city council would set up how, how that would be created. But they are required to have those five statutory required members.
You, you mentioned election. You mean, you mean appointment.
So, sometimes are the community preservation.
Member selection by election or appointment.
By election, yeah.
You could have that, the, the non-statutory members be by election.
Okay, interesting, okay.
I know in towns, you could.
Could also be by appointment.
Could also be by appointment.
Okay. Counsel Mercier.
So, I'm missing one board. The Conservation Commission, Historic Board, Board of Parks, Housing Authority, and?
Planning.
Oh, Planning Board, thank you.
And you can go up to nine.
You can go up to nine. So, you could have a five-member board that would just be those five statutory required people, or you could have a board of nine that would have those five plus four that were, whose, you know, appointment is laid out by that.
And similar to the Planning Board having an administrative person assigned to that board as the zoning board, most likely, we'd have someone assigned to the Community Preservation Committee based upon the workload. And again, you can use part of the money, up to 5% for administrative expenses, so.
Sure. And I, I would imagine that that would be the other, another thing that would be in the ordinance, adopting the, establishing the committee.
Any other questions on the, on the motion? It was made by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Roll call.
Counsel Malazza.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Three yeses.
Motion to recess?
A motion to recess, and I will report at the subcommittee, at the council meeting, report of progress, and we'll move forward. Thank you, thank you all.
Could you just, Mr. Chairman, could you also let us know what the process, the process and maybe even timeline to put this on the ballot? I'm sure it's pretty standard. I know you alluded to it, but, or is it in the memo?
Just, just.
Ninety days prior to the. Yeah, it's, we, it needs to be ninety days prior to the, to the election.
Okay.
And so the.
We have a little time, bye.
A little bit.
Time goes by.